Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
So, good evening and welcome, everyone. It's great to see such a wonderful crowd. This is the Bennington Select Board meeting of November 14th, 2022. And we are on the third floor of the Bennington Fire Facility. I'm Jeanne Jenkins, and I have the pleasure of chairing this board. And I would love my fellow board members, starting with Gary, to introduce themselves.
Welcome to you all. Gary Corey.
Hi, Tom Haley.
Good evening. I'm Jim Carroll.
Hello, everyone. Jeanne Connor.
Welcome, everybody. Bruce Lee Clark.
Lovely. And also with us tonight, we have our esteemed town manager, Stu Hurd. We have Nancy Lively, who takes excellent minutes every single meeting. And we have Josh Boucher on Cat, on the camera for Cat TV, which we so appreciate. So, all right. So, first thing today, we want to, I want to ask if we can amend the agenda a little bit to do the following. First, move the resolution to 4A, and then add a 4B, which is recognition of the Mount Anthony Football Team, and then move public comment to number five. And then we are deleting number six because unfortunately, Terrence White can't be with us this evening, so we'll put him on another agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We are good to go. All right. With those changes, then let's start off the evening as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance. Jim?
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, to the regard of the rights and freedoms of our country, and to the end that is called liberty and tolerance for all.
Thank you very much, Jim.
You're welcome.
And Jeanne, would you read the town's vision, which guides us in all of our work?
Yes. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much. All right. So, next up is the consent agenda. We have the minutes of October 19th, and also October 24th, and the warrants. Does anyone have questions or comments for either Stu or Nancy?
Do you make a motion?
Oh, yes. For, for the purposes of discussion, could I have a motion?
I would move their adoption.
Thank you. Now, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a few corrections, I believe, and fellow select board members, if I'm wrong, chime in. So Nancy, page three, line 92. I'm sorry. October 19th. Yep. Page three, line 92. I believe it should be, "Our vision for this project is to build 17 permanently affordable housing..."
Yes.
"...units."
Yes.
And then, page five, line 181. I think it should say, "Old Stewart's," because it's not, we don't want it to be confused with the new Stewart's. And, page six, line 186. Again, it should be permanent, affordable, not professional. And last, and not least, 193, on page six. I think it, does that say awning? It does say awning, right? Yep, that's good. All right. That's it. Thank you.
Great. I, I also have something. Anyone else have anything? All right. At the end, Nancy, so it's correct that the meeting began at 5:30 and continued through a public presentation and comments. At 7:37, we moved into informal discussion, and you noted that. But the meeting was formally adjourned by the Select Board at 8:30. So we didn't adjourn until after the informal meeting. I think you went, you left, but we continued. Yep. Yes. Okay. Anything else? All right. Any other discussion? No? So all in favor of the minutes and warrants consent agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Great. Okay. So then, what we are doing next is moving into the resolution. Oh, no, we're doing, because we just amended this order. So what I would like to do is, we have a resolution tonight honoring a very special person and her service to the community this evening. We want to ask Lisa Byer to please come up to the podium. And I'll turn to Jeanne to read a Select Board resolution in her honor. Just so everybody can get a good look at you.
Resolution honoring Lisa Byer for 25 years of service to Cat TV. Whereas, Lisa Byer has been the Executive Director at Catamount Access Television since 2003, having started her career there as an administrative assistant in 1997. Her leadership has helped Cat TV to acquire and renovate its offices in 1866 building into a state-of-the-art community television studio, has overseen the change from tape to digital media, and has navigated from one to three channels. And, whereas, she has been the driving force behind the certification of public good renewals, diligently and effectively motivating the 28 access management organizations into one unified voice before the Public Service Board, securing public access television for now and into the future. And whereas, she has not only served Cat TV in an exemplary fashion, but also has served in many volunteer organizations such as Rotary, past president; the Vermont Access Network, past president; served as a volunteer at many community events, and was a founding member of the Shires Media Partnership/WBTN in 2008; and she has been recognized in 2016 with a Chuck Sherwood Leadership Award, and in 2019 with the Remarkable Woman Award. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Bennington Select Board hereby recognizes and honors Lisa Byer for her commitment to public access television here and throughout the state of Vermont for the last 25 years, dated at Bennington, Vermont, this 14th day of November, 2022.
So Lisa, we're gonna, yes, if you want to say something, that's great, because I was going to say, what we're going to do is, we're going to sign your proclamation...
Wonderful.
...so that we can also give it to you.
No, I just wanted to thank you, and it's been, I can't believe it's 25 years, I can't believe, you know, all of it. So I appreciate the recognition. When I started as a part-time administrative assistant in 97, I never thought I would find a career and a community that I love as much as I do. So I really appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
Well, we are so pleased. Lisa? We've almost, we've almost finished signing. We're going to give you your proclamation.
Sarah will have signed it.
No, that's okay. Yeah. So thank you.
Thank you.
Your service, and, and the service that you provide to the Select Board, every single meeting, is extraordinary. So thank you.
I did.
We all signed except Sarah.
Sarah's the only one that didn't sign.
Okay. Yeah, catch her. Thank you. All right. So, and then next up, we have another wonderful resolution, we have another wonderful recognition. And I'm going to turn to Jim to talk with us about the recognizing the MAU football team.
Thank you. To everybody listening, it's been not since 1994 that we have had a state champion football team in Bennington. And one person who deserves special recognition is Coach Chad Gordon, a former Select Board member, who year after year has had his team rise in the ranks, and this year, he reached the pinnacle. All of the coaching staff paid a part in that, and I don't mean to slight overlook anybody. The players themselves. I played on the Mount Anthony Football Team when I was in high school, and while we went to the States, we didn't win that game. But we were, we got back late at night, but we still had the caravan of people welcoming us into town. And I was at the Four Corners yesterday and was so happy for you. And before I invite Chad to the podium, and all of you as well, I don't want to forget your parents, because I'm sure they played an important role in getting you to games, and getting you to practice, and so don't you forget either. Okay? All right, Chad, come on up. And please.
Jim, thank you. Other Select Board members, thank you. It's nice being on this side of the podium for once. I apologize, my voice is still a little gargly from Saturday. But thank you, and thank you for the kind words, Jim. As you guys know from running the town, success doesn't happen overnight. It takes hard work, day in and day out. When I last sat on the Select Board and decided about running again, these guys, these seniors were freshmen, and I knew they were a special group back then, their commitment they showed as freshmen, and I knew that they needed my full 100% support, and that was one of
And congratulations again.
Yes.
Thank you.
the decisions why I didn't run.
Wonderful. All right.
And they demanded that effort from me.
And so now, on our revised agenda, next up, we have public comment.
They wanted it, they wanted to put that work in. And the, the honor, the success that we have this season is due to the hard work that they have put in. Like I said, success doesn't happen overnight. I love the game of football because it mirrors life in so many ways.
So I want to remind everyone that public comment is a time to discuss things that
I tell them, you know, "We all want to win, we all want these special things, but you don't get what you want, you get what you work for." And these guys have learned that, their parents have supported them, they've been phenomenal.
are not on the agenda. We ask that you share information or concerns that are of value to the full community.
It's, it really takes a village, and I'm so happy and proud for this team, for the town, the support they showed. Yesterday was overwhelming, brought me to tears on the bus to see the, the number of
When you have shared your information, please sit down, and if there is any follow-up, or
people that came out, the business owners, the customers coming out of shops, people
if you, or you've asked for a response on something, we will, we will attempt to do
stopping and waving was just phenomenal. So thank you so much for having us here. It's, it's a true honor, so thank you very much.
that either at this time, or send another agenda item, or connect you with a person who can help you more. Please try and keep your, your comments to three minutes. Okay? So, all right. So with that in mind, I think Bill Clark is up first to talk about Holiday Downtown. Yay.
Hi, my name's Bill Clark. I'm a resident here in Bangeton County. I'm also employed with Better Benning Corporation, and I'm the downtown street scape maintenance guy. So with that, I'd like to share tomorrow is November 15th, and the decorations will be finally going out to the downtown tomorrow. And I just wanted to share a little bit about that. It's literally 100 hours to put them together. This year, I had the opportunity with a group, it's called Community-Based Learning, from over to the high school. The teacher's name is Dale Kuplan, I want to say his last name, if I get that right. Kids have been great. I've got eight hours total out of them this year to help make that happen. Kids were really dedicated, a lot of them were willing to come back and continue to help. So with that, it helped my job be a lot easier, and I just wanted to share with the community what our young teenagers from the high school are doing. And they do that work in the community, and a lot of times, they don't get recognized. So I wanted to make sure they got recognized for that. So tomorrow, I'll be out at 5:00, they go out, and then the, town, yeah, buildings and grounds, which I help assist, they will be installing them tomorrow. So I wanted to thank all those guys for making that possible as well. So just wanted to share that with everybody, and thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Good. All right. And then next up is Deb to talk about town.
My name's Debbie Matt from Bennington. I don't feel our town government, management, whatever you want to call them, is doing what's best for our town. If I'm wrong to think that, then things should be run, I feel, more like our households, that we need to save money for future repairs or upkeep, and I don't feel the town, excuse me, I don't feel the town is doing this. When I was at the town office to pay my taxes the other day, I was floored when I saw a delivery person come in with bottled water. We too, how wonderful our water is, and we sell it, but our town office is buying bottled water. I mean, I just, I was flabbergasted, and it makes me wonder what other waste is out there. As a retired taxpayer of Bennington, I feel like I'm being taxed out of my home. I just don't feel that the town has, is running a tight enough budget for a rainy day, or whatever you want to call it. Because if I don't squirrel away money for a roof, and I need a new roof, am I going to petition the town for money to fix it? I don't think that's the way it goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Debbie, I would, please, Sam. Debbie, I would encourage you to come to the budget meetings, which are the first three Saturdays in January. We go through all the budgets. It's televised. I think we start at 8:00 or something, it goes like 8:00 to 12:00. It's, it's, it's early. But it's, it's a time when the department heads come to the meeting, and we walk through the budget line by line, and Select Board and the public can ask any questions they want on why things are set up the way they are. And that's, that's a very good time to, to get the overall picture. But, you know, thank you very much for your comments. Sam? Sam? Next up are, is Bennington College students to talk about Bennington trains and Bennington cars. Or train cars, sorry. Got it.
Good evening. My name is Isabel Harper. I'm a resident of Bennington, and I'm a student at Bennington College. First off, I just want to say thank you so much for your time. Me and my colleagues are here tonight to discuss the 60 LPG train cars that are parked across from Rice Lane and occasionally transport through downtown Bennington. I would like to emphasize three points on these train cars. The first being that they're said to be safe, but there is an inherent risk of having them in our community. The handful of times that they've derailed or combusted, it has been an absolute catastrophe. We've brought a handout that details what a potential blast zone would be if just one of these train cars were to combust. And I would again like to remind everyone that there are 60 packed back-to-back in a residential area. The residents that we've spoken to of Rice Lane are pretty much uniformly concerned about having these highly explosive cars parked essentially in their backyard. The second point that I would like to emphasize is that we, as residents of Bennington, are asked to shoulder the risk of having these cars here, but they don't provide any benefit to our community. They don't provide tax revenue, they don't create jobs, and there's been no investment to our volunteer firefighter department that would have to be first responders if something were to happen. And my third and final point is that we believe that there are common sense solutions that this board can take to address the wreckage storage of these train cars. I know you've discussed this issue in the past, but we just wanted to come and reiterate and talk through it a little bit. We are in communication with Senator Leahy's office to discuss actions that could be taken by this board, and that could potentially act as a model for the entire state of Vermont. So we will be back for the next Select Board meeting to talk in more specificity of what that would look like. But for now, we just ask that you discuss this issue and, and consider it. So yeah, again, thank you so much for your time. Me and my classmates have been studying this issue, and we would be happy to answer any questions about it or discuss it further.
So Isabel, the, so let me ask, Select Board, if, if you want to speak first, and then, then Sam, I'll catch you. So are you, so are you, you're requesting to actually be on the agenda for the next meeting, to have a more, more of a discussion about this?
That would be great.
Okay. And, and that's when you will hopefully have some, some, some steps that we can actually take, because as you say, this has come up before, and what we've understood from our delegation is that we did not have any, any action steps to take.
Any authority.
Yeah, we have no authority over this. So that would, that would be nice for you to do that. Any, any objections to putting this on the next agenda?
No.
Yeah? Okay. So we can certainly do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Sam, did you have a question for Isabel?
I'm a legislator.
What, Sam?
With propane, I'm an expert, because my dad grew up with blue flame gas.
Okay.
And Stu Hurd knows about it, because we lived on the flats.
So introduce yourself.
I'm Sam Ruscino of Bennington, Vermont. On the issue of propane, my experience in propane, my dad, Joseph Ruscino, ran the business Blue Flame Gas on Northside Drive back in 1963, until we moved off Northside Drive in 82. In regards to the propane, yes, it is unsightly, yes, it's storage, it's part-time, those rail cars do move. There has been training by the Bangton Rural Fire Department, the North Bangton Fire Department, Vermont Railway, who has the lines, entertain this educational training, and they do it every year. So first responders that do respond to a possible propane leak, they are experienced in doing that. There hasn't been many derailments on this rail line, the rail lines are maintained, but I'm just adding a little outside information on that. I can understand if they were parked there for six months, but they do move.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And then next up is Kelly Carroll to talk about SOCtober and November Walk.
Hi, I'm Kelly Carroll from Bennington, and I just wanted to thank the Bennington community for participating in SOCtober. And for those of you that don't know, SOCtober is a new sock collection campaign for homeless shelters, and it's actually nationwide. So the totals aren't in yet nationwide with the program that, that we participated in, but so far, it topped just over 151,000. And out of that, we were able to collect 1,018 pairs of new socks here in Bennington. Those are going to go to the Bennington Coalition for the Homeless, or Bennington County Coalition for the Homeless, and the Veterans Place up in, I think it's Northfield, Vermont. And out of those, 611 pairs came from BPD, which is amazing. This is the second year we've done it, and they've always supported that. But I also want to thank the American Legion Post 13, VFW Post 1332, NSK, Vescue, Mount Anthony Primary Care Command, Dr. Suzanne McGuire and her mother, and my, whoever my secret Santa, SOCtober Santa is, for sending me like 100 pairs of socks to my house. So thank you very, very much for participating in that. I know it's a tight year, and we all appreciate it, and socks are something that we take for granted and the number one requested item in homeless shelters, so thank you. And then secondly, I just wanted to let everybody know that the monthly Walloom Sack Downtown River Walk is Saturday, November 19th, which is this Saturday. It starts at 10 o'clock at People's Park, goes up the River Walk, it, we go over, I'm going to mess this up like I always do, over Park, down Pleasant, over School, down Main, and then we end at the Splash Pad, where there will be refreshments. And our speaker this month is going to be Scott Winslow, who is the Food Security Coordinator for GBICs, and he's going to be talking about the Empty Bowls Program. So please join us. It's free, it's open to everybody, it's pet-friendly, it's child-friendly. Come on out, meet your neighbors, meet your community, and learn a little bit about empty bowls and, and food insecurity. So, thank you.
What time is it?
10:00 AM on Saturday. So, thank you.
Super. Thank you. All right. And then Donald Washburn. No? Okay. So, all right. So we will take you off that. All right. So thank you. So next up, then, on the agenda is Lake Perrin Association. Do we have anyone here? Oh, oh, hi. Okay. So, please, come on up and introduce yourself. Okay, so we lied, it's not Alyssa. Everyone but Alyssa, okay.
Well, Alyssa should be on her way. She's just getting back from teaching a class. But, in the meantime, hello, I am Camille Kaufman. I'm the Director of Lake Perrin.
My name is Lindsay Rustino. I'm the AmeriCorps Outreach Coordinator. And we're here to talk to you about our campaign that we've been spearheading this past fall, which is known as Save Lake Perrin. It's our invasive species management plan, and we've actually created a petition that has been spreading around to the community in support of this. And we have over 600 signatures on this campaign to do something about the weeds in Lake Perrin. So we're just going to pass this around, just to look at if that's okay. Next slide, please. All right. So a little bit of background on the problem. Milfoil is what we're focusing on today, and that appeared in Lake Perrin in 1960. And since then, there's been a little bit of management in the lake, but around the 2018, we did a study of the aquatic invasive species in Lake Perrin, and milfoil was the main invasive species. And basically, milfoil spreads by fragmentate, fragmenting. So when it breaks off from the plant, it will reroot in that exact place. So it is very hard to manage. We do hand, hand harvesting now, but we are looking into other options. And really, as we've been going forward with this campaign, we've been trying to gauge the value that Lake Perrin holds in our communities' hearts. So if you could go to the next slide, please. You can see in that past picture, that is an aerial photo of Lake Perrin a couple of years ago, and with the milfoil. But we, we have a lot of supporters of Lake Perrin that sits in the wider Perrin Creek watershed, and sits within three municipalities, North Bennington, The Village, Shaftesbury, and North Bennington. And you can see here that a lot of people care about this lake. It's a wonderful resource, we have camps in the summer, people come and swim, boating is very important to, or the anglers who use Lake Perrin on the fish and wildlife side. So we are doing everything we can to save Lake Perrin. Milfoil is what we're focusing on today, and that appeared in Lake Perrin in 1960. And since then, there's been a little bit of management in the lake, but around the 2018, we did a study of the aquatic invasive species in Lake Perrin, and milfoil was the main invasive species. And basically, milfoil spreads by fragmentate, fragmenting, so when it breaks off from the plant, it will reroot in that exact place. So it is very hard to manage. We do hand, hand harvesting now, but we are looking into other options. And really, as we've been going forward with this campaign, we've been trying to gauge the value that Lake Perrin holds in our communities' hearts. So if you could go to the next slide, please. You can see in that past picture, that is an aerial photo of Lake Perrin a couple of years ago and with the milfoil. But we, we have a lot of supporters of Lake Perrin that sits in the wider Perrin Creek watershed and sits within three municipalities, North Bennington, The Village, Shaftesbury, and North Bennington. And you can see here that a lot of people care about this lake. It's a wonderful resource, we have camps in the summer, people come and swim, boating is very important to, or the anglers who use Lake Perrin on the fish and wildlife side. So we are doing everything we can to save Lake Perrin. Lindsay's going to talk a little bit more about the effects of milfoil. You can go to the next one.
So some of the effects of milfoil, like Camille said, it spreads very, very quickly. And the way it grows, it also grows in these very thick patches in the lake. These thick dense mats of milfoil prevents sunlight from reaching the water. This depletes fish of their oxygen levels, also the native plants that we want in the lake. It decreases food source for the fish. It's all around not good for any of the aquatic species in the lake. Also, the obvious effects on recreation. These plants affect swimmers, fishermen, people on boats, even in the wintertime. Also, the overall safety, the way these plants grow and how they contangle around recreators in the lake poses a huge safety risk to kids in the lake. We have a lot of summer camps throughout the year, and these weeds, I mean, a lot of people complain about them, not only just the annoyance of them, but how they do really disrupt people's summers. And really, I think the most important part is this milfoil, every year, so it grows and grows, in the winter it dies, goes to the bottom of the lake. This creates a shallow water level because the bottom just keeps creeping up and up and up. This milfoil also catches sediment and runoff in the lake, which also in turn causes a more shallow water level. If we don't do anything about this problem, Lake Perrin will turn into a swamp within a couple decades from now.
So with that in mind, you know, Lake Perrin has special capacity this year because Lindsay and I are the first year-round employees that Lake, or Perrin Recreations has, which is a nonprofit. So we've been going to various community stakeholders from broteries and the climate advocates, to name a few, and now we're going to the select boards in, to fill you in on our plan and our campaign. So we really have been considering the community at all levels of this process as well. We've held two public forums so far to gauge the community input as we go along with this because we are a community-run organization, and we take what they have to say in, into heart. So we've been considering two management plans, processes that are coming up that will be taking place this summer. The first one is the herbicide Procellicor. A little bit about this herbicide, it has been used in 10 lakes and ponds in Vermont. It's been certified by the EPA as well as the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation as labeled nontoxic. It only targets milfoil, it does not affect other plants, insects, wildlife, or humans. It will only target milfoil. And I do have, I think it's in my bag, I left it, but I have a toxicology report from the state toxicologist talking about this herbicide a little more. And the state would require permits and surveys before using this, so we would really want to make sure that we do a lot of research before going in this method. And it would cost about $8,000 per acre, so it is pricey. Our second solution is suction harvesting, diver-assisted suction harvesting. Basically, a diver goes in in a wet suit, vacuums up the weeds by the root, it's very targeted, it's a more mechanical solution, and it requires a permit as well. We've been contracting with AE Diving out of Manchester that quoted us for 1750 per day, and we estimate that'll take five to eight days. We have not gone forward with any of these methods for the summer yet, we're still weighing our options, but we plan to come back with a number that we are asking towns as well as different foundations to supply us funding for. We have many partners on this project, including Michael Fernandez from the Bennington County Conservation District, who has been helping us engage stakeholders as well as provide a scientific lens on the issue. So I'll hand it over to him.
Good evening, folks. I'm mostly here to answer any scientific questions. The district at this point is highly recommending the use of Procellicor as opposed to the suction harvesting, as we believe it will be more effective and possibly reduce some additional spread that would result from any fragmentation, results from the suction harvesting. Does the board, anyone on the board have any questions about the, the plan at this point?
I, I think we all do, but I also wanted to see, Nancy, do, do you need him to repeat his name?
Yes.
Michael Fernandez.
Okay. So we start, we'll just go down the line.
The one question I have is, does it, water moves through Lake Perrin and then downstream, does it, does this have any effect on downstream?
No, the, this is a very targeted herbicide. It is going to specifically target and eliminate the milfoil. There are some secondary native species that are affected, but they aren't species that are found either in Lake Perrin or further down the watershed.
Tom, do you have any questions?
I'm lining them for the Procellicor, you listed at 8,000 per acre, how many acres are we talking?
So I didn't mention, but Lake Perrin is 36 acres, and if you go back to a previous graphic, actually, this, yep, that's it. This is from our 2018 Air Route Environmental Survey that surveyed the milfoil in Lake Perrin. And you can see up in the corner there, that's Perrin Recreation, the swimming area, and that red area on the bottom left is the fishing access. So those are kind of the main areas that we'll be targeting, as well as the mouth of Perrin Creek. So we estimate that that's about a quarter of Lake Perrin, but you know, once we go forward with the plan and we work with the consultants, we'll have a better number for the specific acreage.
And if you can, as you can see from the intensity scale, some of these areas are going to need a lot more treatment, others are going to need less, so until the engineers and the applicators come out and actually give us a number, we'd just be estimating, and we don't want to do that.
Okay, so, just doing some quick math, it looks like the suction method is significantly less expensive than, than the, than the pesticide. So what, what makes it so much, why won't the suction method work as well?
So it's, it's all about the next year. If we use the Procellicor, the likelihood that we'll see the same population the next year is lower, and we would have to do less the next year. This is not going to be a one-and-done elimination project. This is part of a wider effort that the district and Perrin Recreations, along with the DEC, are trying to take to remediate some of the very negative ecological cycles that are happening in this lake. So we believe that, and at this point, and we're still doing due diligence, but at this point, with the information we have now, that an initial treatment with the Procellicor to reduce the population without fragmenting and spreading will, and then following up with suction harvest diving in the future when we need to, is going to be a more effective treatment than just doing suction harvesting every year. Thanks.
Now, how is this stuff, the chemical applied, is it on the surface, or do you go down at the roots?
I believe it is sprayed at the roots, yes.
At the roots?
Yes.
And I'm just thinking off the top of my head of some combined effort, you know, to get rid of the wheat, or the wheat, the milfoil immediately, you know, pulling them up, and then maybe next year, just doing a chemical application. But even with the chemical application, does it make it permanent?
No, it doesn't, because you're, we believe that there's still milfoil higher in the watershed, and milfoil also comes in on birds, on their feet, on their feathers. It comes in on if someone is kayaking somewhere and they've got a little bit in their bilge, it can enter a watershed that way. So this is a chronic problem that needs to be managed, that has gotten systemic and unsustainable. So we're starting here with the milfoil, largely because that's where I'm able to get grant funding. There's, it's going to be difficult to get permits for the nuisance weeds that are also causing a problem and need to be handled. But by going in and manually removing this milfoil, when you break up that plant material, it's just going to clone itself and recolonize the exact same areas that you just removed. So you're just pulling weeds to pull weeds, you're not actually reducing the population level significantly. If that had been the case, then doing the simple hand-pulling over the last decades would have significantly impacted and reduced the milfoil, but instead it has only gotten Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, and just one follow-up question, and you touched on it for a second there. Is there federal and state grant funding available?
There is one state grant that we are in high contention for, the Aquatic Nuisance Grant in Aid Program, which is a DEC program. It's a 20% cost match for the whole project. So once we have a budget, and that's significantly reduced, it was 50% last year, but they cut it very significantly.
And nothing from the EPA?
Not at this point. I, in a previous effort, had applied for invasive species management funding from the Department of Interior. We were unsuccessful in that application, but we're encouraged to apply next year. Aquatic invasives, especially in this region, because we're not Lake Champlain, we're not Lake Memphurmagog, there's not a large tourism industry, it, we have not been, our region has not been designated as a high priority for funding until recently. Really, just in the last two years have there been more of those funds coming into southern Vermont. So we've had to get a little creative, these guys with the fundraising efforts and the petitions, but typically in the Northeast Kingdom, conservation districts like ours can typically get much stronger grant funding for these kinds of activities, but we just don't have them available here.
All right, just one more question. Really, have you checked with the Agency of Fish and Wildlife and Natural Resources?
Yes, sir.
And what kind of guidance have they given you?
That removal is encouraged where projects can be funded, but that it's not a high priority for state funds right now.
Well, I was just recently elected to the legislature, and I'll be asking some questions up there.
I'd be happy to sit down and discuss any and all conservation and natural resource issues with you, sir.
Great, thank you for coming.
Yeah, happy to be here.
Can I go next? So, so I looked up Procellicor, I, you know, went to their website, and I, I think first, I would say it's a targeted herbicide, it is not nontoxic. I think that's a, I think that's a misnomer in your, in your slide. And it also says that you wouldn't, that, that repeated use, repeated, that, that you need to have a resistance management plan, and it would not be using Procellicor in the future because you end up with resistant milfoil.
Correct. It'd be just like taking antibiotics. At this point, we're talking about a chronic deadly infection that we need to cure, and then later on, we can use garlic and honey tea. But at this point...
Well, probably not. I mean, not according to their, their specimen label sheet. It says actually you'd need to use a different herbicide is actually what it's saying.
Right, we wouldn't, we wouldn't even want to use a different herbicide. The idea would be to move to suck, spot treatment suction harvesting, which would have no herbicide applications at all after an initial application of Procellicor.
All right. I do, I think, I, I think that if you do come back with a management plan and it does include Procellicor, I think you would want to provide everyone with the information that they have online and make sure that, that the language that we're using, it's an herbicide, you know, it, it isn't nontoxic, it's an herbicide. So, you know, I think you, I think you're getting a sense that we have some, it's, it's a pretty sober thought.
It is.
So, and I'll hand it on over to Jean. Sam, let us finish this part, okay? Thanks.
Hi. I have two questions. Let's just say we, you decide to go with the, with the herbicide, or maybe not, maybe any of the solutions. Have you, would it be beneficial to bring down the cost if you collaborated with other lakes, you know, that are in communities that are having a similar problem? Sometimes when you buy something in bulk or, you know, rent equipment, that's going to be moving, you know, around to a few lakes, the cost may be able to come down. I don't know if that's the case, I just always think about ways to save money and collaborating and moving these big pieces of equipment, if they are big pieces of equipment, I have no idea, can sometimes help. And my other question is, you...
If I could address that first one first? Is it, you're touching on something that I'm actually hoping to come back to this board and speak about. I've been working on developing that kind of a cooperative between the lakes, both in Bennington County, as well as in Pulteney-Meadway Conservation District and Rutland Conservation District, for things like dredges, stormwater, street cleaning equipment, et cetera. At this phase, the equipment isn't going to be purchased, and...
Oh, I didn't mean purchasing, I meant renting, or, yeah.
Yeah, and in order to operate those kinds of machines, you'd need to have special licensing. So we would have to hire an outside contractor to use them, but that's definitely something that's on the district's mind, doing more resource sharing across natural resource areas, so I, I'd very much like to discuss that with you further.
Good. And my other question is, you, you touched on it earlier, what, is there going to be an education component, maybe there already is, and I don't know about it, on how to prevent milfoil from being brought into the lake on the bottoms of kayaks and so on and so forth?
That is an effort that we can undertake. This is phase one of, of larger, what we call a Lake Watershed Action Plan. I'm currently in the process of trying to get one for Big Pond in Woodford, and Lake Perrin is the next on that list, but we have to work our way through where we stand on the state's funding prioritization lists. I've been working very hard with DEC to get us pushed higher up on those lists. So yes, those programs will be in the pipeline in the future, they're called voluntary invasive patrols, and the Aquatic Nuisance Grant in Aid, grant can be used to fund part of those programs, but not all of them. So if we were to conduct an effort like that, it would need to, like this program, be a mix of state fundraising and possibly municipal funds.
Yeah, and it seems like it almost should be a requirement. If they're going to give you X amount of dollars, you probably ought to do some education. They probably would require it, at least it would make sense to me that they would require it. Yeah, good, thank you.
Thank you. My questions have been asked.
Any other questions from the board? No? Okay. Questions from the audience? Sam, come on up and introduce yourself.
I'm Sam Ruscino from Bennington, Vermont. You said there's, this hasn't been done since 1916, nothing has been done on this lake as far as managing, or did I hear you wrong?
No, and Camille would be a better...
So, yeah, so Sam, step back, yeah, Camille, come on up. It's a dance.
Yes, milfoil appeared in the lake in 1960, and there was a little bit of management in the 80s, and then I believe in the early 2000s with bottom barriers, which is basically like putting down mats on top of it, but...
So it has been continued on, it's just that it hasn't been, it's been sporadic maintenance on this?
Yes.
This is not an isolated situation. I'm quite sure you've heard Pontusick Lake in Lanesboro, Massachusetts, which is a bigger lake compared to this. This is a puddle. They've got far more issues at Pontusick Lake than this, so maybe you need to collaborate with Pontusick Lake to find out how they manage their situation. The machines that they use are like small combines that dice up...
Right, so maybe Alyssa, Alyssa, do you want to speak to hydroraking?
Yeah, well, I wanted to say two things. One is that the only, the only management of weeds that has ever happened, in my knowledge, to... to Lake Perrin has been in the swimming area, so that's the small area inside the ropes, because the state has not set, taken care of Lake Perrin as a priority, and so that's the only, that's the only permit that we've been able to get, as Jeanie knows. So, any other weeds outside of that, that very small boundary have been off limits for us. The lake in Massachusetts uses gigantic combines, which has been probably the most prevalent way for lakes to try to remediate their problem, but as Michael was saying, that's no longer the case because the weeds are broken off and they reroot themselves, and so, I mean, it's like mowing your lawn, I mean, it's all like mowing your lawn in some ways, but the, the hydroracers just break the weeds off and then they just travel through the water system and then they reroot themselves, so it doesn't really manage the problem in any, you know, extensive kind of way, so. And we have, in fact, I have reached out to that lake to see whether, this is years ago, whether we could rent their big machines and have them come to the lake and do this.
Yeah, and Alyssa, I was going to say, yes, I was going to say exactly that, and they did not want to rent us their hydroraker.
They did not want to, I think they're out there-
So, Sam, if you have one more question, and then I want to give other people a chance.
Because I've been going into this in depth, you do have a Facebook page?
Yes.
And I've shared some of your knowledge on Facebook page, I've batted it right out of the door, park, as far as educating the, the public about this, this issue, most people don't even know about it. There are many people that come from all over to enjoy this recreation area. I suggest you tap those resources and memberships, private donations, and, I'm sorry, if you're going to be using this lake, you got to pay for it somewhere to fund this maintenance, to do it. You've gone through the state, I'm surprised that the state hasn't helped out all that much. There's been issues with a bigger lake, which is Lake Champlain, and the reason why this is, has developed is, can you, do you know that, why this has, has developed? I'll tell you why. It's the word phosphate. The fert, the fertilizers on the lawns with the landscapers, you need to educate the landscapers to lower the amounts of levels of using fertilizers on lawns that re-inmate and go in, into the lake, that's where your problem is.
Thanks.
And to quote Mrs. Knapp, about maintaining a house, we have to watch our expenditures. Bottom line, you're going to Shaftesbury to ask funding as well, what's the bottom line that you're asking from the town to fund this yearly?
Okay, thank you, Sam. If, yeah, is there, you're welcome to respond.
Well, I, I'd just like to say, I appreciate your comments, sir, and I, I agree, it, there is a larger systemic issue, and that's part of why we're working towards developing a Lake Watershed Action Plan. What that process entails is the district stakeholders and towns bringing all the stakeholders together in one room, develop, identifying key sources of phosphorus, of sediment, of lakeshore erosion, and just to be clear, Lake Perrin is not a lake, it is a reservoir. We call it a lake, and we use it as a lake, but it cannot be managed as a lake because artificial impoundments, and you can see, very basically from the shape and structure of the lake, the triangular shape and the topography means that it is an impoundment, not a natural lake. So, in order to maintain that water feature without turning it into, very slowly over time and in a rapidly accelerating pace as precipitation rates increase and temperature variations are more fluctuating, we need to be more proactive about taking steps and hydroraking isn't effective for the milfoil, it is for the pond weed. Dredging is also a potential option. So, I, I agree with your assessment, sir, and I'd, I'd love to discuss it more with you, you seem passionate about the issue. We, we don't know. Are the contractors who, there's one contractor in the region who is licensed to apply Procellicor. I have been in touch, the Lake Perrin Association has been in touch, and very frequently, and they have not gotten back to us on a price. As soon as we have a price, we're going to come back to this body and inform you of our full plan. This is very similarly to some of the other presentations tonight, an opening salvo introducing the idea to the community. So, if, I, I would encourage you to sign the petition, donate, share the posts on Facebook, and continue coming to the public meetings to make comments.
So, are there, thank you very much, are there any other questions from the audience? Because you've got them all here, so this is the time to ask.
I just want to sort of contextual, I want to get into the weeds just a little bit. So, we've been working on this, or trying to get to this point for about 10 years, and have had several grants from the state to do the mapping. We did do a survey of the environmental impacts surrounding the lake that were contributing to the weed problem. Daley's is clearly one of the reasons why we have so much sediment in the lake, that's another conversation. And we've been trying very hard to convince the state, because it's not up to us, to convince the state that the lake is worth saving, and we finally have done that. Basically, this last summer was the first time that we met with state representatives from the Department of Environmental Conservation, I can't keep all the departments straight. And we finally got like the nod that they would actually be willing to be in conversation with us about what we could do to save the lake. And as you know, Lake Perrin, Perrin Recreations is a very small not-for-profit, and there are three towns that surround this lake, and so, we decided that it was a really important thing to try to work with the community to decide whether people here want to save the lake, because the lake will disappear. And it may disappear in 200 years anyway, but we can slow the process down if we believe that we need this lake in the center of our three towns. We believe that very strongly, that this is a really, really vital community asset, and we decided that we, that someone needed to take charge of this process, this conversation, this education, and a process of community engagement, and then trying to find the resources to do what we can to, to make the lake healthier and to preserve it for all the people that enjoy it. So, we're here to talk to, to the town of Bennington, and we are also talking to Shaftesbury and North Bennington, because all three communities really should be, everyone, everyone needs to have skin in this game for it to be able to work. And I think, as we've been saying, we've been trying to gather all the information needed, some of it isn't quite there yet, but once we get it, I feel like we need to have a smaller kind of strategic planning meeting with people from the different towns to really figure out what the short-term and the long-term goals are here, because this is not a one-off. This is, this is a decade's worth of commitment that, I mean, I'm not saying we have to make a financial commitment for 10 years, but I'm saying that in order to really turn this around, it's not a one- or two-year process. And so, it really does require us to go out to as many different community, you know, groups as we can, and we, and we've been doing that. So, we're, we're kind of trying to put all the pieces together with a very small, a very small but very dedicated crew, so.
Thank you. Nancy, I also wanted to ask you, and then I'll go to Jean. Did you get Alyssa's name? Nancy?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, Jean.
I don't know if you watched or saw any of the meeting that we had on October 19th about the Ben High Project. Okay. We learned at that meeting, the commu, we kind of already knew, but the community learned that by the, by the town of Bennington doing that project and partnering with the person, the corporation that's going to do the housing, they have a lot of access, they have access to funding that neither one would have if they were by themselves. I'm asking the question because I'm wondering if you would have more, have access to funds if you weren't a standalone not-for-profit, but if you were part of the, the town of, of North Bennington and would have access to funding that, in a similar way that that project does?
Michael probably knows the specific answer to that, but that is a conversation that we've been having and is a very long-term conversation and won't be resolved soon. So, there's no, that's not going to happen right away, let's put it that way. And we're, so we're trying to build very strong collaborations with all three towns. But, Michael-
And, and from the, you mean the village of North Bennington?
Yes, the village of Shaftesbury and Bennington.
So, at, at this point, the, the one source of funding that we are able to access from the state is a grant that's only available to municipalities or state agencies like the Conservation District, which is why we partnered with the Lake Perrin Association, or Perrin Recreations, I apologize, I've worked with a lot of lake associations. So, the answer to your question is yes, it would, but there are also other avenues if Perrin Recreations is more efficient as a standalone with support from different community organizations. So, the Conservation District is the one applying for this grant, not Perrin Recreations, because we can actually receive the funds.
Yeah, that, that's, thank you, but I, I guess I can't get beyond, if you were a munis, part of the municipality, the cost to all those other communities would be lower.
Correct.
And, you know, us sitting here, listening to Deb and, you know, the other things, that's, it's concerning, especially when there are sources of funding that you don't have access to right now, but you would if you were in a different situation.
At, at this point in time, there are no sources of state or federal funding that I am aware of that the Conservation District, that's kind of why we exist, is to act as a stakeholder advocate in like DEC, A and R, Agency of Agriculture, and the NRCS.
So, when you said yes, there would be funding sources, what did you mean?
That's the Aquatic Nuisance Grant in Aid Program.
Okay.
That's the one source that we've been able to
Okay.
Find and have a relatively high, there are extremely federal, competitive programs that we'd maybe have a 10 or 15% win rate on an application, but this one, we know almost 100%, more like 75 to 90, because it's never 100% on grant applications, that we would be able to access a significant amount of funds for this project once we have a budget for it. And we'll have a definite answer by that, for that by mid-January to mid-February, depending on when they announce the awards, but we're already preparing that application.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
I grew up in North Bennington, so I have a lot of fond memories around Lake Perrin. Basically, it was a sunny day, my brother, my sister and I were at Lake Perrin, and I remember the milfoil back then, I can't imagine it's gotten any better. What kind of timeframe are you guys trying to, to look at?
Well, good question. I mean, we'd like to do something this summer, but it means putting a lot of pieces together in the next, you know, three months. The permits are, have to be acquired 90 days before any, any work is done, so I think that puts us in, applying for a permit in April, so it's a lot of work in a fairly short period of time. And I, and I did want to sort of mention that a lot of lakes in this state are either state or municipally controlled, or they have homeowners' associations around them, and Lake Perrin has neither of those advantages, you know. So, for example, Woodford Lake, right, which you're working at, is surrounded by private homes, and they pay into a homeowners' association, and Lake Perrin is a real kind of anomaly. There's another lake we know of, Lake Nineveh, right? Emily, wherever you are, is that the name of it? That used to be a, a, a lake like ours, but now has a foundation, it may be, well, it doesn't necessarily matter, but we, we're, we're unusual in the sense that we don't have a governmental agency that has ownership, if you want to put it that way, no one owns the water in Vermont, but, that owns the lake, but we do have three communities that border the lake, and so, we, and Lake Perrin, I mean, we only own six acres of land, it's not like we own the lake either, but our belief is that someone needs to take some, you know, real leadership on this problem, or it's going to get worse, and then the solutions are even going to be harder or almost impossible. So, we're trying to, we're trying to play that role of the, the group that brings the stakeholders together to make really important decisions that affect us now and in the future of this entire area here, this entire region, so.
Yes, just let me add to your calendar of thought process, that is, that the town is even now creating its budget that would go into effect next Jul, July 1?
July 1.
So, and, and we need to be finalized on that in, you may have heard already, in January, so if you're thinking about three months from now, that's already too late. So, that's, so that, so that, just so you're aware, and secondly, I know you've said it a number of times, and you, it's, you're right, it's three communities, it's two towns and a village.
Right.
And the village happens to be in one of those towns. So, make sure that you're not talking about three towns, because they don't, there aren't three towns that exist. There are three communities, I'll give you that. But, I, I think time is of the essence, and you're, and quite frankly, it's already late.
There's also a town vote.
There is a town, there is the matter of a town vote, but, but before the town members get a crack at it, this board gets a crack at it, and I'm very aware of the financial pressures on our taxpayers, being one myself.
It also feels like there are maybe two different, there are two, there are two interconnected questions, right? One is, if, if you as a private entity are coming to, to, to towns and village to say, help support us in what we as a private group want to do, we're going to want input on both what you do and, and the amount of money. So, it seems like it's a, you know, it's a, it's a bit of a, it will be a bit of a discussion, I think, with each community as to what they're actually comfortable having put in, you know, done in the lake, right?
Well, and I think that's kind of the whole point of this discussion, is to start sparking that thought process. It sounds to me like as long as we can get our ducks in a row for the grant that we're already applying for, we should be able to get you guys all that information by the time you're closing out your budget cycle. Is it mid-December that you guys need hard numbers? Is it-
Look at Stu. Oh.
Yes, mid-December would be ideal.
Mid-December, okay.
And Michael, I have one question. Is there a cap on the grant funds that are available?
So, there is a total budget. They aren't a competitive grant, they, and it's also not a very popular grant, so they give as much out as they can with a cap at 20% of total project cost. So, between the towns and the fundraising, we need to raise 80%, and then the state will kick in the 20. And I'd be happy to send that, the, they haven't released the new request for funding proposals yet, but I'd be happy to send the old RFP around to you all, so you can review it for yourselves and look over the, the process. And I'd be happy to discuss it with anyone on the board at any time.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Board, community? Sam, is it a question or a statement?
It's a question.
Okay, please come up. Keep it short.
I'm, I'm a short guy.
I feel like I'm taking a test. In your statement, you mentioned that you've been discussing this for 10 years.
No, not me personally.
I know, well, okay. The village.
No.
No, you personally.
Me, I'm the chair of the board of Perrin Recreations.
Okay, how many is in your, in your board or committee? Is there a handful, six, seven, eight?
Between eight and ten.
Okay. My question is, if you've been working on this for 10 years, why are we here right now? Why, why, why wasn't, wasn't this, I mean, basically, you're looking at this as a cancer patient. Either we go in there and cure the cancer, that's going to be reoccurring, it's not a done deal, there's going to be constant maintenance on this, and yes, it takes two towns and a village.
Thank you, Sam.
So, the, the simplest answer to that question is the state funds were directed towards Lake Champlain and Lake Memphurmagog, both federal and state, and that has changed. There are new funding sources available for reducing total maximum daily loads of phosphorus, as well as habitat restoration, ecosystem restoration, and invasive species removal available through the Lake Champlain Basin Program, and their funding source is shifting from the Clean Water Fund at the state level, which is federal money, that federal and state money combined and paid out. So, now that they have a new source of funds, they're redirecting those funds, and that's a big part of my day every day, is trying to figure out and try and get those funds instead of them going to Brattleboro or to other areas of the state that also, frankly, need the resources, because they also didn't receive those funds for decades. So, that, does that answer your question, sir?
Yes. Obviously.
Sam?
All right, so, all right, so, thank you very much, this was really, really helpful, you have opened a conversation.
you have opened a conversation, and we look forward to you coming back, I think sooner rather than later, it sounds like, yes? All right, thank you very much. And, next up, next up, we have, Dan Monks is going to talk to us about a municipal planning grant that the town would like to apply for, for a revised town plan.
Great, thank you very much. So, yes, why I'm here this evening is to request your support, and I do have a resolution, if you guys do eventually do so this evening, that'll pass around, for the town to apply for a $20,000.
Dan, stop for one second. Could I ask, if, if anyone wants to have a conversation, to please do it outside, please?
And not in the hallway, because it still reverberates back in here.
If you want to talk, go outside.
Sorry, Dan.
Okay, so, again, why, why I'm here this evening is, I'm here to request the Select Board's support for the town to apply for a $20,000 municipal planning grant, to begin the process of updating and modifying and, and essentially doing a new town plan. We envision this process to be in two phases, Phase 1 and Phase 2. Phase 1 will be a extensive public outreach component with the goal of identifying key themes, that will provide a framework for each section of our plan, that will inform policies, actions, priorities, et cetera, so this planning grant, municipal planning grant application is for Phase 1. We consider it a multi-year process over the Phase 1 and Phase 2. Phase 2 would be taking that information that we gather from the public outreach process and the development of, of, of the, the policy frameworks that we want to work with, and actually drafting the town plan, and following all the required statutory requirements that are, that the, the state imposes, and making sure that we check all the boxes from a, from a regulatory standpoint, that, that the regulatory framework the state has set up. So, again, Phase 1, we're asking for this, to fund this evening with the municipal planning grant, Phase 2 will be probably next year, and we would hope to wrap up sometime in early 2025. So, this is a multi-year process, we do want to, normally, we take about a year and a half to two years, even if it's just an update, this is, we consider a completely new town plan, this is something the Planning Commission feels strongly about. You'll recall, we were here a few weeks ago to seek funding for diversity, equity, and inclusion training, to make sure that we are all thinking about those issues as we proceed with this plan, we're still waiting for some funding for that from the Vermont Community Foundation, we hope to hear from them soon, but this would be, using that information along with all of the other, all of the knowledge that the Planning Commission and the community has regarding this, regarding how they want to grow in the future, will all be, all be brought together in this new town plan. So, I guess, I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's really where we are right now, is, is just hoping that you guys will support the Planning Commission in their efforts to begin the public outreach process by, by getting, by attempting to, to gain some funding from the municipal planning grant program.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Yes, go ahead.
I'm, I'm supportive of this, I'm just curious about the asterisk, which I was trying to figure out what that all, says that the total, a total match of 10% of the total project cost, which I'm assuming is 10% of the $20,000, right?
Yes.
Is required.
Yes, because that's the estimated total project cost, yes.
Okay, so, and that's money that we already have?
Yes, we would have that from our training budgets, et cetera, yes, yep.
Okay.
Great, any other questions? Any questions from the public? No? All right, so then I would be looking for a motion to authorize the town to apply?
So, move.
Any more discussion? No? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, great, thank you, Dan. We're very excited, we're very excited for this.
This is great, this is really, really great.
Okay, and so, next up is implementing the town vision, and we have two things on that. First, CPAR, I'm going to turn it over to Tom, who is the liaison to the CPAR, which is the Community Policing Advisory Review Board.
Thanks, I always stumble on that. Every time, yeah. As, as, as many of you have probably heard, the CPAR did have their initial meeting last month, we are meeting again here on Thursday, and I would like at this time to introduce our CPAR's very first chair, Kelly Carroll.
Hi, thank you very much, and like Tom said, we had our first meeting, that was October 27th. We did vote to have our meetings monthly on the third, Thursday, at 6:00 PM, so our next meeting is going to be Thursday, November 17th, and we invite the public to, to join us. We did have a question that, that came up from our last meeting, and before I get into that, I do just want to let everyone know that there should be, hopefully, a clarification in the banner coming out about our meeting. We did have one motion about the Pledge of Allegiance, and it was reported that Tom had voted and he had not. Tom is our liaison, and all of you know, or at least the members of the Select Board do, and now the community will, I've never been on a board before, so there is a learning curve, and I wasn't really sure what happened when it was two, two, and two for the vote, so Tom had just said that the motion didn't pass, and to help me with my education, and I will try not, very hard not to make the same mistakes twice, but there is a learning curve, so thank you for your understanding with that. And then, secondly, there was some discussion about, a question I'm going to have for you in a moment, but that discussion brought about a comment that was, needs some clarification, that Marsh had made regarding, and it was in the paper, about a great mistrust between the community and the police that he had witnessed, but it was not during the training that we had with CPAR. Marsh has had experiences prior to CPAR, where he has been on some task force, and done some surveys, and had some outreach with different members of the community, and that's what he was referring to. I will say, during our training that we had with BPD, there was a lot of trust, there was a lot of, of good communication with the community, that we, and I can specifically say that I, I witnessed, as other members of CPAR can also say, not saying that there isn't work that we have to do from other things, but the comments that Marsh had referred to were from the task force and did not have anything to do with what we had experienced in the training, and I just wanted to clarify that. The reason that I'm here today is because we did have conversation about the Select Board's intent with the attendance for BPD at our meetings. When I look in the resolution that's posted on the, the website for the Community Policing Advisory Review Board, in our meetings, it does say that we will meet monthly, but it does read that the chief of police or designee will attend all CPAR meetings and report on BPD matters as requested by the CPAR chair. So, our question is, was it the intent for the Select Board to have BPD present at all meetings and just present when requested, or was it the intent for the Select Board that BPD would be present only when requested? And we did have some, we had some very good conversation on this, there are people that feel that members of the community might feel intimidated with the presence of the police, but there are people on the committee that also feel that the police are big stakeholders and need to be part of the process and should be welcomed, like everybody should be welcomed at the meetings. So, we are here to ask you your intent. Was it your intent that BPD attend every meeting and present only when requested, or that they only attend and present when requested?
So, I'll just start this off, and then we can, we can, we can get into it. So, Jean, Bruce, and I worked on the charge, and we were, the, the former is what we intended, we wanted the police to be, the chief or his designee to be at the meeting in a similar way to having our town manager or assistant town manager available, because you just don't quite, you know, know what questions are going to come up, and it's really nice to be able to turn to them and say, you know, is this correct, or, you know, what sources are out there, whatever. So, the, the intent was for you, for the CPAR, to control their own meetings, so that the, you know, a, a, a resource, a police resource would be there, so that if you had questions, you could certainly ask, but that you could also say, in our next meeting, we would like you to bring in all the information you can on, on data sources, or, you know, whatever, whatever that is. As a town board, you know, you are going to follow open meeting law anyway, and so, you know, whoever wants to show up for a meeting is welcome to do that, and if CAT-TV covers it, then, you know, viewers at home are also able, able to see, see, you know, what happens at, at the meeting. So, I'll, I'll stop there, but
I just like that.
From my perspective, that was our clear intent, and then it was the intent of the Select Board, to give you two, two regular resources, the chief or his designee and a liaison from the, from the Select Board, who would work with other town, with town staff on anything you needed.
I just want to add one thing.
Sure.
As I recall, another reason why we did it was that, you know, just as with the presence of the town manager and our assistant town manager, you know, when something gets said, oftentimes, when it finally gets to them, there's something lost in translation. So, having a police officer there would, would implicitly, well, with exact knowledge, not only of, you know, law enforcement, but his ability to go back to the chief, or if the chief is there and address it directly, so that was also in our intent. That's it.
All right.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
I would, no, I would just underscore it, all that's true, I mean, I, that, all that Jeanie said is true, I would underscore it, though, that, I mean, even as a new chair, new to a board, it is the board that, that sets the agenda, so, and
Correct.
it's the chair that will work on that, and so, it was always my intent that, yes, there would be resources available for CPAR to do the work that we're asking it to do, that it's not a good practice generally to have someone over, about whom you are talking, or at least an organization not present, that's, that usually just creates more trouble than it's worth.
Yep.
Understanding the issues about temerity, about not wanting people, not feeling comfortable about speaking there, it is also possible, it seems to me, that in certain circumstances, if the chair believes it's in the best interests of what's going on, you can't, I mean, it is a public meeting, but you can request and, and see whether the, you know, I've found people to be very amenable to saying, I can absent myself for these 10 minutes, and if that will help, if that will help the dialogue.
Okay. Well, we're all working together.
But you can't make a rule about that.
No.
Because it's an open meeting.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, that's, I was going to say the same thing that Bruce did, and we're still learning that, too, it's like, the meetings are your, not your meeting, they belong to the board, the CPAR.
Right.
And it's, 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 it's for you and the board to come up with policies and procedures and how to manage the meetings, and it's just hard to remember that sometimes, like, it's your meeting, you, you know, you guys can figure it out, and, and they don't necessarily, and shouldn't probably have an agenda item, like Bruce said, you know, a, a standing agenda item, probably not.
No.
So, I guess I would just encourage you to think about that, and, and when I read the article in the paper and heard the little bit that we heard about, you know, that there was a lively discussion, I, I actually was really glad to read that, because to me, that means that people are feeling comfortable and, and feel like that it's a safe place to express their opinions, even though everyone's not going to agree, to me, that, that seemed like a very healthy thing, so.
Well, we were very fortunate with the amount of training time that we got, and we did get to have, you know, that relationship building where we, we feel like we have, or at least I feel like I have open dialogue with them.
Did we answer your question?
I think so, so the intent, the intent was to have BPD present at the meetings, and then report as requested, which is perfect.
Great, great. Any questions from the community on this? Or, I see we have some CPAR members here, too, if you would like to say anything. We have Jeff and Marsh.
Clear it up, thank you.
Yep. All right. Good. And thank you very much. Thank you, and thank, yes, thank, thanks to the full CPAR for the work that you're doing, we really appreciate it. All right, and so then the other thing we have under implementing, implementing the town vision is the Ideal Vermont program that the town of Bennington was invited to participate in and is participating in. Ideal Vermont stands for Inclusion Diversity Equity Action in Leadership in Vermont, and we have a team, so, part of our team, Assistant Town Manager Dan Monks, SVSU Equity Coordinator Jonathan Phipps, and I attended a really excellent in-person meeting on October 26th in Randolph, where we got to meet representatives from the other 12 to 14 towns that are, that are participating in this program, very good conversations, and everyone from a mayor, we had the mayor of Burlington there, a lot of town managers and assistant town managers, some Select Board members, some equity group representatives, and we were the only, we were the only group that brought a school, a school system representative, which we were really happy to do. So, it, it feels like a really, a really good program, we have an equity program, equity training tomorrow that the other members of the team, who include Jean and Michelle Johnson, who is the HR Director, have been invited to come to, as well as Shannon Barsati, who's the communication, the community development director, so, yeah, I know, I caught it, I caught it. So, so they, they've given us a lot of work, and they're, they're emailing us pretty regularly. So, any questions about, about that? No? Okay. So, then, next up on the agenda is the manager's report.
Yes, and this will be brief, anyone who has traveled Benmont Avenue or County Street today knows full well that Casella Construction is in the process of finishing their work on the Benmont Avenue Sewer Project, the remaining work consists of constructing a manhole at the corner of County and Benmont, it was really fun getting through there today, but they expect to be finished, and they hope to have the paving done by Thanksgiving. So, this project has gone very well, very quickly, and I'm told that they may even continue on a little bit up County Street, weather permitting, into the, into December, although we've heard that there may be some snow falling tomorrow night or the day after. I know, I'm sorry. Just one correction, in my report, I talked about distribution of COVID test kits at 220, it's actually 2200 that we distributed, we have reached out to the Health Department, but have not had a word as to whether or not other test kits are available at this time. Tax sales were concluded, 11 properties were put up, 10 sold, very competitive process this year, a lot of people bidding on these properties, the one that didn't sell is one that does have some toxic condition issues, we did not anticipate that that would sell, but we felt we needed to put it up. Last week, this is a follow-up piece, last meeting, somebody asked about the fleet manager position, that has not been filled, the individual we were talking to and had hoped to hire actually found another job in the interim, so that position is open, and we are in the process of looking around to see if we can find someone that has the same level of certifications, so that they can work on the big diesel trucks and those kinds of things, that's where the savings will be, we're not just looking for a mechanic. And then the last piece, you had an update from Paul Dancero on the Willow Park Playground, and unfortunately, I have some bad news, the cold weather that has now come upon us will not allow us to put down the board-in-place rubber, which is the necessary safety base. Our contractor, Play-by-Design, is exploring other opportunities, there are other systems out there that can be put be put down, not so temperature
Sensitive.
requirements. So we're looking into those to see whether or not we can close this project out this year. But that was, we had a really excellent window of opportunity. Unfortunately, it has closed. The weather going forward looks to be very cold, temperatures rarely exceeding 40, nighttime temperatures down below 32. So it is unlikely that unless something really wonderful comes along, that we'll find an easy solution this fall for this project. We are holding funds, of course, to make sure that the project is finished in accord with whatever specifications we ultimately agree to. So that's all I've got.
Any questions for the town manager?
Yeah. Yeah. The rail, trail out here, how, what's our status on that with regard to its completion?
Dan's the man. He can tell us on this one.
We just got notice today, although I haven't confirmed it myself, the contractor is claiming they're substantially complete, which means that the majority of the work is done, and, but there are significant, and several punches, punch list, excuse me, punch list items left. But anybody who goes out there now, it's fully usable, the signals work, the bridge is, is in, in place. Where we are talking about some punchless items, and there may be some, we do have a possible issue with the pavement condition that we are going to try to resolve with the contractor, but it is fully usable, and folks can get out there and enjoy it.
That's what I wanted the people to know.
And I, I've walked it several times myself. Everything works, and, and the final piece, big piece that we're waiting for is putting a final coat of fine material on top of the gravel, because as, as folks may have noticed, I mean, it seemed pretty rough. That was just an undercoat.
That's a base coat.
Yeah, base coat. The final coat has been placed. I'm told today, I have not confirmed it myself, it'll make that a much smoother surface going forward. So that's where we are. We're going to have the state down and our engineers to take a look, to put together a final punch list item, and then a punch list of items that need to be addressed. And, but it is, you can go out tomorrow if you want to use it. Like, if you want to ride on your bike, or walk, or run, or whatever you want to do, it's ready to go. The only one thing that we do want to make sure people know is it is not for motorized vehicles, but we do allow, we do, under state law, we do allow for electric bicycles. So feel free to take your electric bike out there, but not your electric motorcycle, please. So.
Thank you. Yes, Jean.
I just want the public to know that with the delays with Willow Park and the curbing issue and the fact that they're going to have to come back, it has not affected the cost at all. Is that true?
That is true.
Okay.
We're holding funds.
Yep. No, I mean, I mean, I guess ultimately, the project is costing more than it would have with the curbing especially, but it's not being...
That is not the case.
That's not the case.
It will cost what it was bid.
Right. Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? No? Okay. Upcoming agenda. So it sounds like maybe we have two items, the parked propane cars on the tracks. So update on that, and also, you think Terrence will be able to come?
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll see.
So, and so possibly Green Mountain Express.
Possibly Green Mountain will come back, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Anything else that we know of?
No, and I think that, that meeting is November 28.
What meeting?
The next meeting.
Oh, it's November 28th, yes.
Yeah.
It is right after a long Thanksgiving weekend, which means we have a very short week in which to prepare a packet. So let's keep the agenda short and sweet.
Here, here.
And enjoy the holidays.
Okay. Or it may, yeah, so maybe, maybe we put both of those on to the first December meeting.
Those are fairly short, short items, I think, but we'll talk.
Okay. All right. Okay. Okay. I'll put or December meeting. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Other business. Nothing?
Yeah, I just want to make note of a ribbon cutting ceremony I went to on Saturday for the Giff Gardens new offshoot Holiday Cottage. It was, it's probably the best location in the downtown. It's where the old Verizon shop was, and it's got glass on all sides. The window display is just like what I remember when I was a kid with Christmas displays, and they've got a beautiful selection, all sorts of stuff. And I encourage everybody to go in and take a look and maybe buy something.
Excellent. What do you think, Jean?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure people knew that MAU is going to be performing the musical Chicago this coming weekend. I think it's November 17 through 19, and you can get tickets. There's a website, just call the school if you want to come. I think it's $8 a person, and having been to many, many of them, it is $8 well spent.
Bruce?
Two things. Thinking, thinking back just a little bit, thanks to the members of the Board of Civil Authority and to the clerk and assistant clerk for their work in, on the elections, and to the folks who came in and voted that day. The general good humor and the sense of civic duty was well received. And a reminder that if you're thinking about parking on the street after tomorrow night, I think, is that right? Tomorrow night?
November 15th, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. The 15th of November. Please don't. And, or be prepared to get a ticket.
We generally, we generally just note.
I know you give warnings, but I...
You put nice warnings on cars.
Thank you.
Yes, you do give warnings. But please, everybody, if you can think of it, don't park on the street.
All right. Okay. So we have need of an executive session for personnel reasons. We will not be making any decisions coming out of the executive session. Could have a motion to go in.
So move, that we do that.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight.